Good evening. Let's call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kingman City Council. We first would turn some time over to our city clerk, Annie Meredith, for roll call.
Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Samaley.
Here.
Councilmember Savage.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley is excused this evening. Councilmember Walker?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be given by Michael Bell of the Kingman Nazarene Church, after which and I invite all of us to stand, of course. And then afterwards, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, and I've asked Councilor Sue Ann Mello to give, to do that.
Heavenly Father, thank you that we can come to a God that cares for the ins and outs of the workings of a city, of how you are interested in its structure, its range of control and operation, and how you are interested in the people with whom are the workers of this city, and for those that they serve and work around. We ask the protection, peace, professionalism, and safety for all of the city workers this day. And we thank you, Heavenly Father, that you are concerned with this council and its decisions that it will make today. I pray that you, Almighty God, give them the wisdom to make good and fair decisions, interpret the codes of this city with a right understanding, and to keep the mind, keep in mind that Kingman is occupied by people that they are concerned about. May this council always understand that they have the responsibility to be fair, just, and have the courage to make sure that the city operates in a way that brings honor to its citizens and to those who work for it. Father, give them the wisdom of heaven this day, and peace in knowing that you are guiding them. We pray these things in the matchless name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for Riches Downs, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The council may go into executive session for legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03A3 to discuss any agenda item. The following items may be discussed, considered, and decisions made relating thereto. Item number one, appointments. 1A Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission appointment. The Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission currently has one vacancy. The mayor and city manager have received and reviewed with staff applications from Tom Beller and Dana Marino. Staff is recommending appointment of Tom Beller to four years, a four-year term beginning on November 15, 2022, and ending on December 31, 2026. On the Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission, staff recommends appointment of Tom Beller. Is Mr. Beller here today? Yes, Tom. Would you like to come up and say anything?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I appreciate the opportunity and to put onto the commission, I think I can add value to kind of bridge a gap between the tenants out there, because I do know them, being in the staffing industry here in the city for so long, and the needs of what the airpark actually needs. So hopefully, it works out. I'll field any questions you may have, if any.
Council? Okay. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Who's our commissioner of coun- yes, Sue Ann.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to go ahead and support the staff's recommendation of appointing Mr. Beller to the terms, the four-year term on Airport and Industrial Park Advisory Commission.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a second? Is there any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Item two, call to the public. Comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda, with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comments should be limited to no longer than three minutes. Clerk Annie.
Hi. Thank you, Mayor. We do not have anybody that registered to join us via Zoom tonight. No written comments were received in advance, and there is no one that has signed up for a public comment this evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on then to item number three, consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Counsel, I think we've all had a chance to take a look at this. Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion? Okay, hearing. Oh, yes, Council Savage.
Yes, I would like to discuss item E.
Okay.
Considering the Wildland vehicle.
Okay. We will pull that item. So then all items, then A through D, if we can have a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So item, the consent agenda, item E. Mr. Savage, you would like to?
Yes. I looked into this, and inflation unfortunately affected just about everybody in this whole world. And the cost of this went up roughly $50,000, which I can understand that. But my question is, it states it ultimately is going to increase revenue for the city. How is that happening?
Mr. Foggan.
So we actually do have a revenue source for this. I'll let our chief talk to you about how the Wildland vehicle will be used.
I was gonna say, this is probably a chief question.
Yeah. So he's gonna explain it better than I will, so.
Yes. So the last, I believe it's been two years now, we established a Wildland Fire Rate Agreement. So when we do go out and assist BLM or other agencies outside of our city boundaries, we have the ability to bill, which we have never done in the past. It's always been under mutual aid. So that's the component that is the revenue generator for this.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Any other questions?
Just for the record, it, that's not guaranteed that we're gonna get a call, but we do, we do now have the ability to bill, so.
Correct.
I did, did have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
Um, I just, just curiosity, is this gonna be additionally staffed, or are you gonna staff it with?
No, it's part of our fee. This, this is a vehicle replacement of an old brush truck that we have that's 20 years old now. It's a replacement of that vehicle.
Okay.
And then ultimately, if it does go out, we'll utilize staffing that we currently have. We're not hiring new people to put on it.
Okay. And which stations is gonna be housed?
It's actually gonna be moved out to Station 3 on Stockton Hill because of our Wildland Urban Interface. Most of the calls we get are out toward fishing game. The city limits go all the way out there. So that's where most of our calls come in.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Council Savage, I, I like how you mentioned that revenue source, because oftentimes, we don't think of that when it's public safety. But this one is by chance covered by a revenue source. So that's great. Thank you, Chief. Thanks. Okay. Since you made it, would you like to make the motion then to approve item 3E?
I make a motion to approve item 3E.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Item number four, old, old business for a public hearing to adopt ordinance number 1946 to increase wastewater capacity fees. A component of the wastewater capacity fee was calculated using a plan-based approach, which identified specific areas of the wastewater system that would require interceptor lines to be constructed to meet future demand. However, after adoption of the report, the Grace Neil Sewer Main Interceptor Line, which was not included in the report, was identified as an interceptor line needing to be constructed to meet future demand. Staff worked with Tishner-Beis to modify the wastewater capacity fee report to include the Grace Neil Sewer Main Interceptor Line. In accordance with ARS 9-511.01, a municipality shall not increase wastewater fees without the city council adopting a notice of intent to increase the fees and setting a public hearing date. Staff recommends approval. Manager Foggan.
Yeah. So we've had, we've been through the process now, and we've waited the number of days required. And so we're bringing it back as the council has asked. And so I will let Tina introduce the, what we've done, and of course, our consultant, who you're all starting to become quite familiar with as well. So Ms. Tina.
Great. Thank you so much. So I do have Ben Griffin virtually with us. He'll give a very, very brief presentation and be available for any questions. But ultimately, once the public hearing is held, and if ordinance number 1946 is adopted, the wastewater capacity fees will increase by about 26% to include the Grace Neil Sewer Main Interceptor Line. Ben?
Thanks, Tina. Councilmembers, as Tina said, I'll make this very brief, because you've already seen this, you know, back in September, when we had the notice of intent. You know, tonight is essentially the final public hearing on this. If you choose to adopt tonight, then the fees would become effective on December 15. So just quickly, there are no changes to the treatment facilities components. So it's still, you know, the plant investment and recouping, you know, that component of the fee. The only change is, which you can see outlined at the bottom, or outlined in red, the Grace Neil Sewer Line. So we did add that to what you adopted in November of last year. And so, you know, it's just adding $3.7 million to the total planned interceptor facilities costs. There were no changes to the wastewater revenue credits. So what, what you see here is, you know, the proposed fees, the, you know, base meter or the single-family meter would increase from $3,233 to $4,072. This is the, the final slide I have for this, so I'm available, you know, for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Ben. Oh, thank you, Carl. Thanks, Ben. Counsel, any questions for Ben? Okay, hearing none. Then we need to open a public hearing. So the public hearing is now open. We have a number of residents that would like to share some thoughts on this, and so we would ask Mr. Barry Nelson to come forward.
Thank you, councilmembers. As you know, we are facing the highest rate of inflation in 50 years. I feel that a 26% increase is really bad. That's, that's a horrible increase. I also wonder if the need for this project shouldn't be paid for by the people that need it, or the, the contractor, the development company, instead of putting on, putting it on all the rest of us. And again, obviously, you know the cost of this project. How many years would this increase have to take place to cover that cost? Is it five years, 10 years, or what? But I'm sure you, you know that or can figure it out. My suggestion would be if you do have to go with a big increase, instead of having it like 26% for five years, make it, make it 13% for 10 years. Spread it out over. A 26% increase right now is a big whack on people that are having a hard time making it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Next, we have Mike Case. Welcome, Mr. Case.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Mike Case, resident here of Kingman. I just became aware of this here. You know, might be my fault that I didn't know what was going on. But I know the city spent a lot of time and a lot of money to try to get Prop 415 passed, and that's been out in the public. Well, this really hasn't been out in the public. I've tried to read this report, and to be honest with you, I don't understand it, you know, for the common person like me. I mean, is this increasing my rates, or is this for new hookups to the system? I'm just really confused about it, and I think it should be pushed off and more education given to the public, so they know what they're, what's gonna be happening to them. I know part of the, our rates are based on our water usage per day for the wastewater side. But all that water does not go down the sewers. You know, like I'm watering my plants, washing my vehicles, stuff like that. So that's actually going back into the ground, helping us. So I don't think, at this moment, we should really pass this ordinance, and I think it should be delayed. I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I just don't understand it, and I'm sure there's a lot of people out there that don't understand what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Case. Are there any more comments or questions from those present here in chambers? Would like to say anything? Okay, hearing none. Like to close this public hearing. Counsel, questions for?
Can we get a clarification for the people that?
That's what I was gonna do with, yes, actually, Tina, I think. We need you up front, please.
Well, we don't, I mean, Tina can do it, Ben can do it, I can do it. It, so for the citizens that gave public testimony, this is a fee that is paid for by new growth. It is not paid by the users of the sewer system. So this is something that we have had in place for a number of years. For anybody who builds a new, a new home, this is what they pay. So the comment about the developers should pay it, technically, that is true. Anybody that buys, builds a new home is gonna pay this. The ratepayers do not pay this. This is the reason why we actually have this fee, is so that, that growth pays for growth, and the residents or our, our fee, those that pay our sewer fees do not have to cover the cost of this. So it actually is, this is a development fee for new development, both inside the city and outside the city. Anybody who ties a new connection to our sewer system.
Okay. I think, Mr. Foggan, thank you for that clarification. Counsel, any questions for staff or discussion?
I just have a couple of comments.
Yes.
And just clarification for the public. Mr. Foggan, was this in our capital improvements plan for 2023?
Yes, it was.
So it just got moved up. And the reason that I brought this forward during the budget, budget session, was because of all the growth that was going on, what I call on the West Bench. So I was told that they were at capacity for sewer, and the future development was not gonna be able to happen. So in order for our community to grow, and for us to obtain more sales tax revenue for those residents that are growing, are coming into our area, I felt it necessary to move it up by a year. So I did move it up. Was well aware it wasn't going to be paid for by the ratepayers, so I felt comfortable doing that. And as well as, I, I truly do believe that development should pay for development. So we're following in those footsteps, so.
Okay. Thank you, counselor. Any other comments? Yes, Council Nelson.
I would like to simply reiterate, growth pays for growth, and that's the one thing that we always want to try to do when we're sitting up here. That helps our citizens out there today. So growth paying for growth is really an important way to approach this. So I, I think it's a very, very good idea, and thank you for moving it forward.
Okay. Counsel Walker?
I had a few phone calls today, and I had to explain the same thing to them. So I'm glad staff explained that, that it is growth paying for growth, and it's not on the backs of the ratepayers.
Correct. I think it is important to state then, and correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Foggan, that anybody who builds a new home, whether you're a big developer or a con, a single contractor or a private owner, is gonna raise your connection fee, your capacity fee. I mean, your fees, right?
So the answer to that is no.
No? Okay.
So if you build on a lot that had a previous home on it, then you will not pay that fee. But any new home with a new connection to the system will pay it. So if you, if you were to build a new home in the, like downtown area, where there had been an existing home, you wouldn't, you wouldn't pay that because it's already tied to the system. This is for any, any new development that tie, or any new structure that ties to our sewer system.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that is, we have a lot of infill happening. We have been.
Yeah.
Of course, that has slowed down, but I'm talking about lots that are out throughout the city that are, nothing has ever been built on.
That's correct.
So those, okay.
Yep. Anything that did not have a structure on it previously tied to the sewer system.
Correct. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I would, we would entertain then a motion. I think, well, I, let me back up. I think we covered all the questions that were ro, that had risen during public comment. And I think, I think most of us are probably comfortable with our decision, decision on what we need to do tonight. So that being the case, I would like to have a motion on item 4A.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Number five, new business, we have none. Number six, department reports. First, 6A Neighborhood Services Update. Welcome, Chief Cooper. Clerk Meredith saves the day for all of us.
If you don't do it through here, then the Zoom participants can't see it. Where is yours?
I'd just like to point out, you're having difficulty.
I just don't know which one is yours.
So as she's preparing for that, what I'm here to report on, and I'm excited to do it, is give you an update. We've, we've affectionately called it a rebranding of our Neighborhood Services section. And I want to explain to you what that rebranding looks like.
So the first thing that, I'll give you just a second to look at that nice title screen there. But what the rebranding is gonna look like, first off, thank you, Mayor and Council. I appreciate being, having the opportunity to talk to you this evening. The main thing is, the name we've called it, well, often it's called Code Enforcement or Code Services or Neighborhood Services. We're making a conscientious effort to settle on the name Neighborhood Services. Neighborhood Services better describes what they do. It's not always enforcement. There's a lot of services and things that they do, and it's, it's not aggressive sounding, and we don't want it to be that. So Neighborhood Services, you'll hear it called NSO, because that refers to an officer, Neighborhood Service Officer. So sometimes you'll say, hey, I called NSO, and you'll hear that term. But we're, we're focusing on the term, the title, Neighborhood Services Bureau. The most obvious change is gonna be, there's gonna be a new look. I've asked for Neighborhood Service Officer Cody Smith if he would come up. It's what's gonna be most obvious. There you go. Cody was thrilled to be here this morning, or this evening, I'm sorry. So you'll notice up to this point, they were wearing blue, and it was really close to what the police officers have. And some of the work that they do, without a firearm, without a taser, making sure. They can get, they can get confused, and it was a problem. And I felt that was something that was problematic. So we've changed it. This color, this scheme is a little more conducive to the work that they do, because they are doing a lot of work and picking up animals and whatnot, and they do that. So I just wanted him to show that to you and be aware of that. So I think most of the uniform equipment is in, some, we're still waiting, supply chain's affecting us. But this is what you're gonna see the most. It's gonna be the most obvious. So appreciate it. Cody, you can leave if you want, or you can hang out. It's up to you. They're also gonna be, part of the rebranding, they're gonna be supplied body cameras. That's new. They hadn't up to this point had that. So they will now have body cameras as well. You had approved a new contract with our taser vendor, and they're also gonna have, our NSOs will have body cameras, which will come in very handy. Just, it's been a benefit to the officers, and it'll be a benefit to our code enforcement as far as evidentiary purposes, training purposes. And not everybody's happy when a code enforcement officer, Neighborhood Service Officer shows up to their house and tells them they have to fix or clean something, and they can get aggravated and frustrated. And sometimes I get complaints of officers being rude, and just, I'm anticipating, just like my police officers, 99% of the time, it's not true. And, but it's also another level of accountability and training. So they'll be equipped with body cameras. Within the last year, we had a new command structure implemented. Prior to that, they were on, under one structure with a lieutenant and a sergeant, and it was real heavy, a lot of responsibility, and it didn't provide them enough oversight. Not that they need us watching what they're doing, but for us to better support them and help them and guide them. All of my Neighborhood Service Officers are not trained police officers. So they come in with, most of the time, little to no experience in regards to investigations, and citing people and charging, making criminal reports. But we do train them into that. So they become officers. So it's, we've moved them this past year on, to, over a little bit on our structure. And there, I think there's a copy of that in your slides, if you have that. But it provides them better support, better accountability, and the code enforcement issues throughout the city have increased, right? Complaints, I know you know that, because you're getting phone calls. And we're, we're, part of the rebranding is to better address those issues, be a little more efficient. We're also providing take-home vehicles to them. Up to this point, the vehicles would stay at the office, and then they would drive in and get into their car. Well, there's been an increase in animal bites, and regards to quarantine procedures, it's kind of complicated. Currently, my officers don't have that training or necessarily knowledge and access to the, the dog pound animal shelter. So my code enforcement, Neighborhood, see, I'm calling it code enforcement as well. My Neighborhood Service Officers have that, and that's part of the training that they receive. They also assist with serious crashes and accidents. They're kind of a force multiplier, that they've also been cross-trained for traffic control, and that helps us with that. So they do have take-home vehicles, and it allows them to respond much quicker when that happens, and it's happening more and more. We also implemented a new field training program. New police officers go through it. We call FTO, Field Training Officers Field Training Program, where they have a set structure. My Special Services Investigation Commander, Jim Bryce, has put together a more formalized field training program for them. It's just a little more structured. We've put the assistance of the city attorney's office. There's a little more understanding, a little more knowledge of what exactly to get them up to speed, them, meaning the Neighborhood Service Office, and all the city codes, what's criminal, what's not. It's, it's not a simple task. There's a lot that's expected of these folks. So we implemented a more formal field training program. And also, we've, I've made an effort, and I've asked my team to come up with some clearly defined procedures and priorities. They still have discretion, but there are some areas where one Neighborhood Service Officer might have discretion at this issue, and another one would be a little more quick to make an enforcement. And sometimes it was confusing. It provided some inconsistent response. And so there's certain areas, and I'll cover those here in a little bit, where we've tightened that up. And so there's certain areas, and I'll cover those here in a little bit, where we've tightened that up, right? To make that a little more understanding, not to take away discretion necessarily, but there are some things that need to happen a little more, a little quicker, perhaps. So the priorities, maintaining 100%, or obtaining 100% compliance is always, is still and will remain our goal. We try to obtain voluntary compliance from those that we're dealing with, because there is a process. And if someone doesn't comply, it's a, it can be a long process anyways, right? There's a 30-day period where we try to gain compliance, and if they don't, then we file forms, whether they get a ticket, or we long-form it to the City Attorney's Office, that starts another clock, and then if there's court proceedings. So we still try to gain the compliance at the front end of it as best that we can. And we know that that doesn't always happen, but it's still the goal, so we try to work through that. Priorities are to have a working knowledge of our city code. There is a Code Services section under Development Services side of the city. That's not under me, that's under Chief Yager's side of the house, so that's where sometimes there's confusion. Well, it's called Code Services, well, which Code Services are you talking about? So we're trying to take that away internally, so that we function a little more efficient as an organization, but it also provides clarity for our customers, which is what we're ultimately trying to do, to get to a solution here. So that's a priority, to make sure they have quick, usable, understandable knowledge, or at least where to go in the city code book. The proactive enforcement. There are certain things that we have directed them, I've asked my team to make sure that it's clear, zero tolerance. And some of the zero tolerance things that pop up, that prior to, someone may have had discretion, or if they saw something, they would maybe come back to that while they're taking care of another issue. So an example would be shopping carts. Shopping carts are zero tolerance, so they're expected to, if they see it, stop, pick it up immediately if they can, depends what they have in the back of their truck. And we have a, we have a stack of shopping carts out at our public works. So also mattresses, appliances, tires, I'm missing something in here. I think that was it. So those are the things, like zero tolerance. Some of those come up, whether it's in an alley or an access or along the roadway. It's not that they've ignored them, but sometimes as you're going through to another call, right, you just don't notice it. But yet, everybody else is noticing it, and I'm sure you and the community members are noticing it as well. So there is more of a focus on that. They're expected to do it right away, and we track all of these things. So high visibility is just something to make them aware. The vehicles, I believe you're aware of, they say Neighborhood Services. As we replace vehicles, my goal is to make it look less like a police car, because right now it sort of looks like a police car, it's a truck, but it has the similar scheme, and when we do replace, we will look at, similar to their uniforms, they're modified a little bit, make it a little more clear what they are and what they're doing. But they're expected to be visible in the neighborhoods and make themselves known, communicate with neighbors, you know, just develop the relationships with the folks in the areas that they're responsible for. Priorities has always been a thorough and timely reports. That's part of the structure, a new change in command structure, but that's held to a certain degree. We don't want those to linger. And then also following up with reporting persons, it's something that we've always wanted them to do, but now it's expected and required to be in a report. They haven't always, someone wants to be, they don't want anything done necessarily, but they just want it taken care of in the past. They may, or the officer may or may not contact that reporting person. Well, now they're expected to at least make the phone call to that reporting person and let them know what has been done, or what is being done, or why something wasn't done, perhaps, because there's always that difference of opinion on, someone's opinion on what a violation is versus our opinion on what a violation is. There's always some gray area on occasion, but they are expected to have timely follow-up. Also, every officer at some point, at the beginning of employment with us, we'll get them trained, we'll get them certified. It's called NACA certification, National Animal Control Association certification. So most of the animal control calls are dealing with dogs, but occasionally you'll have the one-off, like the chicken that we had yesterday, and then we had a pot-billy pig last week. So it's kind of cute, it's fun, but it is things that they do deal with. But this NACA certification gives them the tools and the skills to be able to handle these things, because we also provide them animal control equipment, catch poles, nets, certain kinds of gloves. That also attributes to them being called out, you know, subject to that, makes them more available and prepared. Then the other, I mentioned it briefly before, is Police Services Support. We also use them, as I said, with traffic control, invaluable. You know, if I got officers assigned to different incidents that are going on, and we have a crash, that's easily two officers that are just to handle the deal, the incident in the street. We need assistance sometimes to manage intersections or begin detours and establish that, and they're very capable of doing that, so they assist us with that as well. So this is the structure, the little circles are my feeble attempt at using technology to underline where they fall. But it's very hard to read, but that just kind of shows you where they're at in our structure. That top line that is underlined is the operations, and it falls under that, which is the Uniform Patrol, and also our Investigations Detectives Section, and the third red line is an Administrative Sergeant. And that Sergeant is responsible for the traffic unit and Neighborhood Services, and he also helps monitor our Volunteer Section. And that, before, this was assigned under the other lieutenant, and he was also responsible for the four patrol squads. Excuse me, there just was a lot, a lot of moving parts there, and they were, sometimes Neighborhood Services was kind of getting lost in that, and not getting the attention that they need, because they do need the training, they need the support, they need the guidance. And so this seems to have worked very well for us so far.
I just want to say, Mayor, nailed it.
Okay.
The technology piece is perfect.
Chief Cooper, thank you for that report. I like the new look. I think it's great, I think it shows our citizens, especially with the body cams, that, you know, that's going to give backup, both for your department and, of course, for the citizens in case they have questions. I think it's a great idea. I like the new branding. So comments from, or questions from Council?
Mayor.
Yes.
I had a question, Chief, how many NSOs do you have?
Thank you. That was information I wanted to share. It's almost like that was planned. I currently have four Neighborhood Service Officer positions. We have three currently staffed, then we're recruiting for the fourth. So again, I would reiterate, most of these applicants have no investigative or law enforcement experience, and so the work that they do and the work that they're expected to do is pretty impressive, as far as I'm concerned. And so, but we're currently three, and we're looking to hire a fourth one. Someone's in our process right now, background for Neighborhood Service Officer, as we speak.
I also had another question. There is also, so they can call in if a citizen were to have a complaint for NSO, and they can also do that online?
There is an online access through the city's webpage, cityofkingman.com, I believe, and there's towards the bottom, and you can file a complaint through that. It's preferred between that and contacting our dispatch. You can call, just like you would a police call, a police call for service, you can contact that, and through our dispatch center, they do that. It's more effective, and I know oftentimes, our elected, you get phone calls, and it's more effective for us and more efficient. If they haven't contacted us or made a report to us, that they get directed to our dispatch center. Have you made a call to them? No, it's better, because it's more efficient, we track it from the get-go. We're able, the call comes in, it gets a number assigned to it, as opposed to you, to me, to them, to somebody. It gets a little funky sometimes going backwards like that.
Well, and I think that's important. I mean, the online, you know, I think it's important for our citizens to understand that they can make those reports anonymously and via online, and then it's tracked.
Yep.
So, like you said, you're not relying on people to contact people to contact people. So I thank you for that, because I think it's underutilized, the online service, so.
It is, and I would add this, that it's, a lot of what they do is complaint-driven. So if someone says, well, I go by this every day, well, they are being proactive in other areas, but with the three or the four, they got plenty that's expected of them, but that doesn't mean something can't become a higher priority. But they are complaint-driven. So again, they got the zero tolerance things, there's four of those topics that they're expected to do right away. And I know when we have our discussions with them in our team meetings, that we bring up an item that's a high profile, or a high concern, or that's a high, and then they're expected to take action on that, not forget about it, and I know we pay extra attention, I say we, the leadership team, we pay extra attention to make sure that it's getting done, but there's other areas. So that's something that's important for the community to be aware of. If we haven't received a complaint on it, it's entirely possible, maybe we have seen it. But it helps us to justify war, we're there knocking on someone's door, telling them that their property is substandard, or less than it could be. It just works a little easier that way for us, and then we can develop that relationship. Because let's be honest, there's a lot of properties that are probably substandard, we could probably all agree, but I also know that I'm not reasonably able to address all of those at one time. So having complaints come, it is useful, through our dispatch center or through the online portal. Great, thank you. Yes, Counselor Walker.
And this might be above Chief Cooper, it might be more of an IT, but do we have capability of text? I know you have email, how am I the dispatch center, but could we look at doing text?
No. I know they have text 911, there's texting available there, but I would say, I would imagine that's, I don't know though. We haven't looked at it, seriously.
That might be, some people are like, I don't have a computer, I've had that before, I thought this is all.
Yeah.
I just wondered if that could be available.
That is an IT. If you're asking me, that's an IT question. Manager Foggan.
It's actually probably more of a program rather than ITs, but we'll look at it for sure. Just want to say and applaud Chief Cooper for this effort, because I know that it's, it was kind of a challenge that I put to him. And so, thank you, Chief, you actually did nail it, more than just the technology. And then finally, it's .gov.
Yes, cityofkingman.gov, correct.
Just so if anybody's searching for that. And we really, I do want to put an extra push out there for using a system, because it really is possible when you get, everybody's played telephone, and if we started here and got all the way to Annie, the message is different and sometimes completely forgotten. You never know when you're calling somebody, exactly what they're doing at the time, whether it's, you know, eating lunch, in a meeting, whatever. And so it's always great to have that paper trail, to be able to say, yes, citizen A submitted this, it's been looked at, and it gives us that opportunity to do that follow-up, as Chief Cooper said, that we want to do. And if you pass it through the telephone, yeah, we do our best to get that to the people, the frontline people, but there are times where that falls a little bit short, and then we're trying to recover.
Gets lost in translation.
Well, that too.
Yes.
So anyway, thank you, Chief.
Thanks again. I know we all get calls from citizens, especially as elected officials, but I know Manager Foggan, and I think, as you've mentioned, as Manager Foggan has mentioned, the most important thing is go on to the website, because once they file that complaint, it's immediately filed, there's, now there's a timestamp, there's follow-up, and it just makes it easier, so we appreciate that. And I think too, the city has been very, you know, I appreciate you bringing up the zero tolerance, those four items, because oftentimes people will call and they'll say, why isn't the city doing something on this? I've already turned in a complaint about it. And of course, the city has to be malevolent in certain areas, because there are timeframes that they are given to do certain things, clean up their properties and such, and so we always have to take that into consideration. So I appreciate you bringing that up too, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number 6B, Transportation Master Plan Update. Mr. Foggan, I think Mr. Ponte is going to take lead on this?
Yeah, this is just ongoing a part of the process for our transportation master plan, and so we're actually, you're going to hear about this subject in a few months as well, as we wrap it up and share with you the final product. But Jack is going to, is going to take this one, and he will take the next one, I imagine, too.
Okay.
Not the next item, Jack, sorry.
Yeah, I try that too. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. So I guess luckily enough for both of us, Kim Lee Horn, Michael Grandy specifically, is a consultant that's been leading this project with us, and is here to give you an update on that. Just a little bit of background, as you guys know, it's our Transportation Master Plan. And so what we're hoping to do, or we're working through, is identifying current and future needs for updates to our transportation plan, and so that will, or our transportation network, rather. And so this will help guide both our CIP projects and development as time goes on to make sure that we account for, you know, the growth and development of our city and improving safety. So with that, I'd like to bring up Michael Grandy, and he's going to run you guys through what is now starting our second round of public engagement and project selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack, and thank you, Mayor, Council, for this opportunity to come and present. So Curtis Larson is the City Project Manager, so if you do have any questions that are too tough for me or Jack, you can talk to Curtis. And as Jack mentioned, I'm the consultant project manager on this, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and present to you again. I know I was here about six months ago or so, I believe it was. And so we've made a lot of progress since then. We're going to talk about, just a quick overview of the process of the Transportation Master Plan, talk about this round two of engagement, and they were just kicking off tomorrow, and then also give you kind of a preview of some of the potential improvements, and how we kind of refine those down to a set of draft recommended projects, and then kind of where we go from there. So this graphic shows kind of the four major steps of the Transportation Master Plan. First, we identify where the issues are, then the needs that are out there, and second, kind of brainstorm different opportunities to improve and address those needs. Then third is kind of refine those ideas and start to prioritize them. And then fourth is some final recommendations. But up at the top, the two arrows, you can see that those are important inputs into the process. First is the round one of engagement, kind of upfront, help us understand what the issues are public. And then now we're about to embark on this round two of, you know, take a look at what we've come up with, let us know your thoughts on it before we kind of finalize things. So we're in the September to December timeframe for this third step, and, you know, early next year is when we'll kind of wrap things up, assuming all goes according to plan. So for round two, similar to last time, we do have a website, it's the same website address that we had before, kingmentmp.com. There's also a QR code, people can, you know, take a picture with their phone, and your camera will guide you to that website. Again, the plan is to kick that off starting tomorrow. We do have a video posted on the website that kind of explains what's happened since last round of engagement. Talks about the comments that we got from people, how we developed solutions and prioritize things. So that's a video that they can watch, and then we also have a series of maps and tables that people can look at the potential draft projects, and then some comment boxes where they can put in what they would like to see, or if they have any questions or concerns, we're happy to address that. And recognizing it's getting into the holiday season, normally we do like a month open, so we're going a little more than a month to give people a little extra time, and hopefully by, you can put it on your Christmas list, drop us a little note there, and we'll get it right before Christmas time there. Similar to what we did in round one, we will be advertising through the utility bills that go to everyone in the utility service area. We found this to be very successful last time. We received over 400 comments, which for a city the size of Kingman, and for this type of project, that's unusually high. But we're grateful for that, we like, we like high input from the public. And so again, those utility bills will start going out tomorrow with that insert in them, and again, it gives the, you know, the website, the QR code, and the deadline of December 23rd. We will also send out a social media post through the city's social media channel, and an email blast to any who last time signed up to say, hey, we want to make sure we know about this. So we're trying to use several different ways to get the word out. And would appreciate you helping us too, as you talk to your constituents, to send them to the website and to provide their comments. So just a kind of quick recap of what happened since. So just a kind of quick recap of what happened since last time I presented here. So we did our own technical analysis of existing conditions. We looked at what had been done in prior efforts. And then took that input from the public also, like over 400 comments that I mentioned. And when we went to the public last time with a survey, we got some feedback from them on what their priorities were related to automobile travel, active transportation, which is bicycle and pedestrian transit, and then also for future travel. We also asked for some kind of their opinion on trade-offs. Would you rather put a lot of money into a few big projects or kind of spread it out and do more smaller projects? And would you rather do, invest more in maintenance of existing facilities or more in expansion into new facilities? So that's helpful to get their information and thoughts on those priorities and trade-offs. Then we had a map on the website that people could drop comment pins and, you know, say what issues they saw in these categories, roadway intersection, transit, pedestrian bicycle, shared use path, trail and other. And we did get comments in all those categories. And that really helped to shape the solutions that we came up with. So we were able to boil down all that information into 99 potential solutions. And you can see in the light blue, you know, a little over half of them came from previous plans and studies. Some of the problems that we recognized have been problems for a while, you know. And we found a few new ones that, you know, hadn't come up before in any prior analysis. But almost a third of these 99 solutions came from the public. You know, they had over 400 comments, but a lot of them were on, you know, the same topic. That's why it went from 400 down to, you know, like 30, 31 or whatever. And then there were 7% that came from a combination of kind of multiple sources that hit on parts of what was going on there. And it was spread pretty well throughout the, throughout the city where those 99 solutions are. So then we prioritized those solutions based on the five priorities that we'd given the public to comment on in that first round of outreach through the survey. And these percentages here are the kind of the weight that we gave to each of these different categories. And you'll notice like for active transportation, the public said safety was a higher priority as a bicyclist or a pedestrian than in an automobile. You know, it's something they're more concerned about. Comfort is less of a concern for automobile than it is for active transportation. Accessibility, you know, being able to get in and out quickly was a top priority if you're in your car. I think those, the results that we got there were, seemed to make a lot of sense and be similar to what we were expecting. So, once we kind of scored all those project, or all those solutions, we consolidated them into what we call 63 projects. And that consolidation could have happened for various reasons. One, there may have been some solutions that had some overlap, that maybe we could combine them into one project. Or maybe they had similar elements, like you might have a traffic signal in three places, three different traffic signals, it makes sense to put those all in one project rather than have them each be a separate project in terms of how you would bid it out and things. And then finally, some of them are improving multiple modes of travel. Like there's a solution to put bike lanes somewhere, there's also a solution to widen the road, which per this current city standard, if you widen that road, it would have a bike lane. So those can kind of be merged together into one project. So then we prioritized those 63 projects and put them into basically three groupings, you know, high, medium and low priority. Each one, when we put a cost estimate to them, came up to, you know, around 200 million for each of those groupings. And, you know, a little less than 700 million total, which is a big number. I don't know if any of you have pocket change like that or sitting around. But those are, there's a lot of needs out there. And we recognize that it's likely not feasible to tackle all of them at once, which is part of why we do the prioritization to kind of help with that. So this map shows those draft recommended projects, and this is what's on the website. People go to take a look at the website, you can see this. The high priority are the ones in green. And the solid lines are roadway related. And then ones with the diamonds are active transportation related. And the little dots in them are the transit ones. So we did have a mix, wasn't like all roadway projects in all priority categories there. The purple lines on here are the programmed projects. A lot of the comments that we did get from the public were related to the proposed interchanges, which I understand you're going to get an update on tonight after this. But we did, we're not including those as priority projects because they're already programmed. You know, funding's already allocated, so we're looking, you know, beyond that, what else is needed. So the next step is, once we get that input from the public, we'll finalize the recommendations. And our intent is to kind of focus on those high priority projects. Identify what might be some potential funding sources for that. You know, it could be city money, but it could also be some grant programs that are out there that the city could look at pursuing. Identify the phasing, which ones should go first within that high priority bucket. And then who would be responsible for implementing them. Most of them are City of Kingman, but there are a few that are ADOT or the county. And they've been partners in this process and are aware of what's being presented here tonight. Those medium and low priority projects, you know, we don't eliminate them, but they're kind of put on the back burner as, you know, reconsider these in future updates or as conditions change. You know, there might be a need to kind of go back and say, well, remember, I do remember there was a project there. Maybe we should look at that a little closer, you know, because traffic patterns changed or something like that. So that's all I had for the presentation. Happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grandy. Questions from council?
I do have a question.
Yes, Councilor Samley.
So when you're going through this process, are you working through this process anticipating the interchanges to be complete and how that will affect traffic patterns?
Correct, yes. We have built traffic models that we can, you know, show what that would look like with those interchanges in there. And traffic patterns do change a little bit, especially the southeast part of the city. People, you know, start going different directions because you don't have to come over to Stockton Hill and Andy Devine anymore to get on the freeway.
I certainly hope so.
Yeah.
For Walapai Mountain's sake.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions from Mr. Grandy? Once again, we appreciate you coming up and sharing all this information with us.
Thank you.
Okay, item 6C, Rancho Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange Update. And we get to pick on Mr. Plante again?
No.
No, Mr. Foggan?
No. Well, we can pick on Jack if you want.
Well, yes.
I'm happy to pick on Jack.
Okay.
I just be, while we're bringing this up, I just want to just say that our public outreach on this transportation master plan has been outstanding. And want to applaud our team and the consultant for the efforts that they're making to get input. And when I, when I was told that we'd had 400 people comment, that's, that's like gold in the kind of the public comment world, and especially when you're doing a master planning. So, is someone going to be able to change that for me as we go?
Yeah, I'm not very able to.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, this is kind of our regular update on our two TIs that were referenced in the last report. So the Rancho, Santa Fe and Kingman Crossing Traffic Interchange Update. It's not, I wish that we were reporting on this more often because there was wide sweeping changes. But there are, there are some improvements happening and progress, so I am happy to report on those. So if I can get the next slide, please? Okay, perfect. So Kingman Crossing, the traffic interchange there was at 30% design. AECOM is actually doing the design for our development partner. And they submitted 30% plans. Those plans have been reviewed by ADOT as well. There's several other reviewing entities that look at the plans as they reach these mile markers. City is one of them. And so, that 30% process has been completed. And AECOM has been given the comments back and are now in the process of moving on to 60% plan review. And that will be, they're planning on having that happen sometime towards the end of January, into February is, and just as a reminder, their, their current schedule is showing that they'll be 100% plan complete by the end of April of 2023. With that, so the plans are moving forward. I don't know that there was anything in the review that was staggering or surprising. I think they had good conversations with ADOT. I know our team provided some important feedback to them. And so, AECOM marches on to 60% plans. The other thing that I wanted to point out is last week, we had, we held a pre-application, not meet, meeting, sorry, with the developing, the developers' team. And we looked at and discussed their conceptual plans for their commercial development and provided some, that's an opportunity to really point out some spots where they may want to consider looking at alternatives or opportunities to do something different or to be able to say, yeah, you're, you know, you want to do your streets here and your water lines there and that kind of stuff. This is all preliminary, there's, they're not obviously submitting plans, but just trying to get an idea of what, what it's going to be like to develop their commercial project in this area. So that's really exciting. When the developer starts showing up and talking about, you know, putting in roads and infrastructure and bringing commercial businesses to town, that's, that's when the fun starts. So, we're really excited to have had that meeting with them, good conversation. And they left with a better understanding of as they start developing their commercial project, what to look for. So we're really pretty excited to have had that initial conversation. So, that is on Kingman Crossing. And any questions on Kingman Crossing? Okay.
Counselor? Okay.
Okay. Next slide is our Rancho Santa Fe TI. So there's progress in, unfortunately, the FAA is still involved in this project. Bless their hearts. The, the environmental assessment process is still testing all of us. Jack Plante is, he still has a little bit of hair left, but after this project, may not have any. The project's scoping is complete for the environmental assessment. All environmental information has been compiled, so we've done all that we can do. We are scheduled to submit all of the paperwork, everything, to the FAA December 8th. And with that is, then we will be waiting for the FAA's legal review and release. And so, we're expecting that after the December 8th submission. We'll expect that in anywhere from 60 to 90 days. And that will basically create the, will open the property for the road to be, to be actually built on. I just put up there, as just as a reminder, the irrevocable letter of credit in our agreement with the developer, with KDP manager, is that they owe us a letter, irrevocable letter of credit 30 days after that land release happens. And then I just also wanted to point out that October 19th, last month, KDP manager executed with AECOM a change order for about $530,000. So AECOM is currently working on designs for the flood control system in that area, the Phase 2 roadway and water and sewer line design. And just got an update late last week that AECOM will have the, all the utility lines, that's water and sewer, that complete design will be done by the end of January of 2023. So, work is progressing and we are making forward progress. I think we'll make more if we can get the FAA situation finalized. And so, that's where we are with Rancho, and happy to answer any questions on Rancho.
Yes, Councilor Samley, I can see that you have a question.
I do. So looking at that timeline and kind of putting some preliminary dates together, we're looking at having everything in line around February-ish?
Yep.
So breaking ground?
Well, the project will still, we'll, we'll request the money from the state, our 20 million. That's what the irrevocable letter of credit will, will take to get that money. How long that takes the state, let's give them 30 days. And then that will then authorize, will authorize ADOT to move forward with bidding out the project. So you're probably groundbreaking July, probably.
Okay. And my next question is the grant that we applied for.
Yes, we have not heard anything.
Wait, is there a deadline? Is there just, we sit and wait?
We sit and wait.
Fabulous.
Yeah, that's kind of the way grant, the grant world works. You know, we have not received any updates, so no news in grant world is good news.
Okay.
If, if it's not, yeah, when you haven't heard, it's not a no yet, so.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I just, I guess in the next, in the next report, I'd like to see some kind of timeline. I think that's a good visual for the public.
Well, I would.
If we, if.
I would love to give you.
A loose timeline, a loose timeline.
It would be really loose.
How's that, you know, because, I mean, I have to sit there and put the 30 to the 60 to the 30, you know. So I feel like that would be a good visual. Loose and with the disclaimer that, you know, every day this could change, but, I mean.
Well, I guess my, my point was to show forward progress. And when we get to a point where we can show you a realistic timeline, I think that makes sense. And really, I think once we have the state's $20 million in, in the bank and are able to make that escrow deposit in, for the TI, then I definitely will be able to share a much more stable timeline for the project.
Perfect. I really do appreciate these updates. And I know the citizens do as well because this is, these are the two things that I get asked about.
It's my pleasure.
The most often. So I appreciate the updates and the real up-to-date information, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments or questions from Mr. Foggan? Mr. Foggan, I have a question for you. Any expiration date on the monies from the state?
June 30th, 2024.
Okay, thank you. So that's, that is critical, but it sounds like we have a little bit of time, we have lots of time still. Well, in this, that's not a lot, but, but yeah, in the way government moves sometimes, not our government, but all those other ones involved.
No, I, we, we are definitely working with all haste to have that not approach any sooner than it has to, but.
And then estimate on cost, because that was a concern with all the, all the pricing and everything inflation has happened, but of course, some of those prices are dropping back down.
My, my last, my last presentation on this was cost estimates and the project's still within our budgeted estimates.
Good, okay. Thank you, Mr. Foggan. Okay, moving on. Item seven, announcements by mayor, council members and city manager. Once again, Mr. Foggan, we'll turn some time over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. I really don't have too much for you other than to let you know that we had the INA hearing with ADWR Saturday. I appreciate the mayor, Councilor Staley and Rob Owen giving testimony in favor of the INA. It, it was a meeting that. It, it was a meeting that was held at the county supervisor's auditorium from 1:00 to 5:00 Saturday afternoon. And it went almost to 5:00. So I think just to recap on it is there were 35 people that gave public testimony in favor and 20 that gave public testimony opposed to the INA. So the director, the ADWR director, has the requirement to make a decision in favor of an INA or not to carry forth an INA within 30 days of that hearing. And so don't know if the, if he'll wait all 30 days or if it's going to come out tomorrow. We just, we, that's something we just don't know. Was, I guess, one of the things I would like to point out is that we gave great testimony, but Senator Barelli was there and gave testimony in favor of the INA as well, something that our state legislators have been working on. I know Representative Cobb has been, has worked on water, wanting to have some kind of water legislation that protected groundwater for us and other spots in the state for, for all six years that she was doing her service. And this is by far the closest thing that we've had to anything that would protect our groundwater now and into the future. So that's all I have to report, or at least that's what I think I have to report anyway.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Counselor Walker. Thank you. Counselor Samley.
I do. So I just wanted to say that I did a ride along on the 5th of November with Kingman Fire Station 22. And I was there from 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. And I know that's not their entire shift, but that's what I could give. So I wanted to really thank them for their hospitality. I learned a lot. I got to ride on the medic unit, quite a few calls on the medic unit. So I got to see that in action and how that actually helps to where the fire engine doesn't have to go out every single time when it's a medic call. The very last call of the night, just before I left, I got to ride in the fire engine and I got to ride, wear the headset and I got to listen to dispatch and I got to, like, we were going to a car accident, so I got to see everything in motion. And the professionalism and the way that they handle themselves is just amazing. From the time you get the call and you're sitting in the station and everything's going off and the adrenaline's rushing to the time you get in the, the fire engine, it was very exhilarating. I was, I was excited. I do not want to be a firefighter, so, but I do thank them for their service. And I also got to visit all of the fire stations. So I got to see all the people on duty. I got to have good conversation. I got to see how they live. I would not like to live that way, but I, I got to see the camaraderie and, and just the pride. So I'm very grateful for our fire department and all the work that they do for our community and keeping us safe. And so I have now completed a ride along with the police department and the fire department and the cart bus. I'm coming for you.
We've got the sewer lined up.
You want to go on a waste, a trash truck, solid waste ride along?
Solid waste. You got it.
We can do that. Okay, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, Counselor. Yes, Mayor. This Saturday, the mayor and I were fortunate enough to be able to ride in the Veterans' Day Parade. We had great turnout. Unfortunately, I couldn't make the INA meeting. I had the privilege of doing a celebration with honoring 53 vets. So that kind of took priority for me for that, but I'm glad everyone stood up for that thing that needs to go away. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nelson. Thank you. Counselor Mello.
I also was able to ride in the veterans parade and support our veterans. And this time of year, you know, we love our veterans and, you know, we get that Christmas feeling and I just encourage everybody to go on the city's website and buy some bus passes, cart passes for our veterans. For $20, you can get four bus passes for our beloved veterans and help them out this year and next year. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor Mello. I have on my calendar that tomorrow is the Veterans' Court graduation again, and of course, remind everybody about that at 1:30. Okay, so, and then of course, this Friday, November 19th, is Chilling on Beale. And of course, great times down here in downtown Kingman. And of course, let everybody know about that. Also on the 19th, and I think this is important, I want to read the whole thing about it, is Stop the Traffic Walk. Stop the Traffic will raise awareness on the issue of human trafficking, trafficking in Mojave County. The Futures Without Fear Coalition has banded together to create a fun, family-friendly event to support youth in staying safe and healthy. The community will walk up and down Beale Street with awareness signs to stop the traffic and make people look at what is going on in our community. And Metcalf Park will be filled with resources and caring community members aimed at supporting our youth and of course, join us as we raise awareness on human trafficking in that Metcalf Park. And 10:00 AM check-in and 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM is the walk up and down Beale Street. So I think that's important for people to be aware of. And of course, Thanksgiving will be, of course, next week. Want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and safe travel during the holidays, so we can all go enjoy our families, but also return back home safely. And then November 26th, that Saturday afterwards, is Shop Small Saturday. And of course, that is frequenting our, our businesses downtown and throughout Kingman to shop local and that shop small business. And once again, I appreciate all that. I don't have anything else.
Mayor, if I might.
Yes, Manager Foggan.
Sorry, a little bird reminded me that I missed a couple of things. The downtown light display parade will happen before our next council meeting. So the, the parade will be 12:03, so December 3rd. Put that on your calendars because we will, we will absolutely have the council wagon there and it will be dressed up and shown off. Hopefully, council members are able to attend that. Also, cannot go without saying, we've had wild success with an angel tree here at City Complex. The angel tree will be here again this year. We've always had great luck and support for getting those ornaments out off the tree and presents rolling in. So the angel tree will be in the lobby next week. Toys for Tots bin, you walked by it. We would love to have some of our bin, we'd love to have it filled and have some toys go out from that. And then the mayor mentioned Thanksgiving. Just as a reminder, city hall will be closed November 24th and 25th, so thank you.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Item number eight on our agenda, council requests for future reports and updates. Counsel? Yes, Counselor Walker.
I was going to ask staff if we could give a reminder of upcoming conventions and summits or we, I know we probably end of the whole year, but we do each, each quarter begin, so that's, so that's.
Okay, staff is aware.
Okay.
Yes, Manager Foggan.
No, I'm good. I'm just, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Executive session, 9A, city manager compensation review follow-up. The council may go into executive session pursuant to ARS 38-431.03A1 for discussion and possible action regarding the city manager's compensation. So thank you once again to everybody here in chambers and who, or if you've been viewing online, but the council is going to retire to, do we need to make a motion on that, Carl? We do. Can we have a motion then to go into executive session?
Some of.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye. Aye. And once again, all of you have a good evening. Thank you.